They seem to be okay for now.
Well, there was a developer that was completing some work and so.
Okay, work happens.
Yeah, I had some signatures, that's why I was early, so I was getting those rounded up and so, sorry guys. So I only have one item, and it was the um.
Dynamic Air.
Yes, we had a contract proposal for work, and it was a silo unit at our Streetsboro plant. And this has been broke since August, our crew had tried to do the repairs internally. And it's a proprietary piece of equipment, and that whole dryer is what processes our Class A material. It's a biosolid, and it's exceptional quality sludge, that's what EPE terms it. And we only have so much room in our barns, and when we do run the silo, it's typically can be run by one individual. But since the silo has broken, we have no way to load the trucks when the process comes off of that dryer. Because usually the silo always would automatically load the dump trucks. So with it being down, it's caused us to have an increase in staff time. And we typically run the dryer for 24 hours, it's just more efficient than the start and stop cycle. So we did send this proposal over for legal review, and he did have some concerns. And when I contacted Dynamic Air, they are proprietary, there's no one else in the area that can do this work.
Okay.
They do not negotiate on their contract terms. And when I did some research, we did enter a similar contract in 2018 that had the same.
Burbage.
The same burbage, the same terms, the service rates system, sorry. I have a fold as well, so I'm trying to.
Oh, that's okay.
We've got anyone. Cross continue me. We did have a similar contract, and I think a lot of these service rates were what was in question. There was also the net 10, we typically do net 30, and we had signed that, and we had done this work in 2018. They're an existing established vendor with us, and we just like to move ahead to get the work completed. The purchase order was processed for this, but we didn't move ahead of it because legal had a few questions on it. It was the scope of work listed as troubleshooting. They typically put that down as troubleshooting as their scope of work, only because they believe they know what the issue is with the equipment. Because we know, our staff knows, but they can't come up and say that without visually being on site to look at it.
Yeah, and it looks like their rates are the same.
The rates were the same.
When they were in 18, I don't see any difference.
Yeah.
And you said they're the only ones that.
Right, when I did, when we did some research, and we put the equipment in, they were the proprietary designer of the sideline. And if you go on my website, this is what they do, this is all they do. And our staff were not able to repair it. And when we did do the P, the purchase order back in 2018, they only had one increase on it. And I looked up that information before I left the office today. So the first purchase order was done July 5th. And then after they came on site, and from what I understand, talking to Streetsboro staff, there was only one other purchase order made after that, and it was because of materials that they needed. But the staff at Streetsboro right now seem to be fully aware of what needs to be fixed, they just can't complete that work. They tried it, so they know what material will need to be purchased, so they don't anticipate another purchase order. And I think that it was like for 7,200.
Yeah, 72, 75.
72, 75 was the total for that. And so we just like, I did put a journal entry with this to move forward with processing this proposal. Because when I had contacted Dynamic Air, they were, they said we don't negotiate, and we wouldn't pay our legal fees. And so I guess if they're the only proprietary.
You don't have a lot of choice on this one.
I know, so I was talking to Jeanne Beck and Port about this, and she said, you know, it's a $7 million piece of equipment, we don't want to jeopardize it. It was a very expensive dryer unit when we put that in.
And it sounds like it'd take a lot of extra work for you guys.
And yeah, they increase it in a line, because then when you do overnight, over at Streetsboro, we don't have to do overnight staff. So when we run the dryer, we have one person who's trained on the dryer, and he can do that overnight. Now that we've had like multiple things, you've had to really schedule in that round, so.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
It's on there as a journal entry.
This is Janet, I was trying to track her down, that's why. This is for Oakwood, it's a dispersment request. Yeah, she signed it, so, sorry. Just one place, right?
Yeah.
Just the one, yeah. Great, thanks, I'll go get that to her, Janet will be doing that.
Hey Amy, can you bring Todd in? I'll start it from there. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas too.
Thank you Laura, and thank you for coming in. You did a good job explaining it all.
Consider it a.
Hi. Todd, I just wanted to go over the recap. There were some things that you said that we had not included, that we still need to consider. Or if our decision is no, then we can leave it alone. But the biggest thing is the staff increases, I believe.
So between the four choices.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Can you walk through these add-ons, Todd, just make sure we have everything.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have so many. Two were part of the original packet, right?
Cash advance return, I believe that was in the original.
The cash should be in three, is that eight? We have this. Looks like 11.
Yes, 11 is good, and then there was a transfer to 002. That's number.
Wait a second, is 11?
11's the cash advance return, so that's, it was on the original, so that's okay.
And it's.
Transfer to 002 is number 10, so that's good.
That's been in there.
Yes, and there should be a transfer to 1310, I believe that's in the original packet. That was for 291,000.
Number four, transfer?
Yeah.
And then there should be a transfer to 1480.
Okay, 291, 340. And that's the second add-on.
Yeah, that was two, that's the.
Probably all two.
So that should cover.
Everything, done.
See if we can get add-ons.
And the first add-on is where we have.
The budget.
Resolution five, that's where we need to.
That's the general budget.
Selection on. And then we have number six. How do we, how would we make the.
So you could pass it, utilize an option two, or you could say pass with the two and a half, or the whatever percent you include. Or you can tell me now, and I have it all up on my computer, it'll take me five minutes to get you.
Based on what you put together, Todd, I feel comfortable by moving forward with the two and a half. I'm just looking at these figures, I think we can afford it, it's in line with the price, you know, the Consumer Price Index. It's well deserved.
Yes.
And I think, I appreciate the breakdown.
Yes.
That was helpful, but I'm comfortable with the forward with 2.5.
I am too.
The only question I have about that was the concern that if we go all the way to two and a half, which is where our, are you, most of our union contracts and everyone else are at two, two and a quarter. That's going to set a precedence that they most likely will ask for that, or above that. That's, that's the only concern I have about going all the way to two and a half. I mean, I'm fine with two and a quarter, but I just think that if we do do the two and a half, it could put us in a position to.
Well, you know, every year the union gets more than.
It does.
And there were, you know, the.
We got zero.
You can start at two and a quarter.
There were several years where they got two, and everyone got zero.
Right.
But again, it's what have you done for me lately, not what happened before.
Right, I understand. That's the only thing, well, like I said, most of the unions are at two, two and a quarter, so instead of starting at two and a quarter, they'll start at two and a half or more, but.
I think a rule with the two and a half.
Say the two and a half, I will get that to you then here in a couple seconds. And that one, that one at 400, with the two lines to the probation. Is there anything else needed before I go and do that?
Can you talk through that resolution 11, the 570 cash advance, just what that is?
So that was, I don't know if you remember, about a month ago. We had to pay debt, the courts had an agreement, it's a $700,000 debt payment. It was refinancing from the Emerson home, actually, the money had to go somewhere, so it went to the Kent courthouse to be rebuilt, or to be built. The judges passed a fee that they put on top of it, and they cleared monies. For whatever reason, they like to transfer their money after it's paid, which means we have to do an advance to pay it. Then they transfer, which we did last week, and then we return the advance, and so this is the return of that advance.
I have a Joanne question.
Okay.
Unless you guys know about this, resolution 24 with the roof at the Happy Day School, it doesn't have the, in the original packet. It doesn't have the language about bids that we usually would have, so I just wanted to.
Enter into.
For an expense, almost a million dollars, I'm assuming the bid process was followed. I just don't have that assurance by reading it.
You know, we could probably ask Joanne that on.
Yeah, Joanne will know right away, do you want me to call her and I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have her come up when you come back.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Wait, hold on, I'm sorry, I think that was my only question, other than, I'll be with the add-ons.
Jewel, you gotta go come in here.
I'll go get that for you real quick.
Okay.
We'll recess till Todd gets back in here, he can come back in shortly.
I'm trying to keep all my stuff straight, so I get confused. Sorry, if that's possible. Probably, I'll take one of those.
Yeah.
Jesus.
All right, are we ready?
We're waiting for Joanne.
We're waiting for Joanne. Oh, I thought we were just calling her.
No, she called her to come up.
Oh, sure.
You're the one who requested her, can you not need her up here?
I did have a question, so yeah, I did have her up here. I just thought we were calling her, but I.
Well, I said call her initially.
It's okay.
I think she said come up, and that would be helpful.
Todd forgot, I said I'd call Joanne, but he just called her, she doesn't need to come up.
Okay.
They have their DV, it's like a stated process and separate.
Okay.
They did, they followed that.
Okay.
So that was my.
I figured it was something like that.
Right. I just, it's just a big number, I just want to make sure. And I asked Todd to come in here, just so we don't make sure we vote.
For the right things.
Right, correctly for his ability to implement all this. So I mean, Joanne doesn't need to come up. She looked into it, and she said that they followed their stated process, which is a separate thing, and it's fine.
Okay.
Todd's going to come in here though, while we do these votes, just to make sure.
Yeah, and then he also sent us an email before we passed the budget, wanting to know, just verifying, I think. Will we be looking to put any additional funds for like the county administrator, that's where we're going to just. Again.
I don't think we are ready to do that, but I think that we would, that can be something we would do.
That could be contingency.
Yeah.
Please ask me, and that's what the other morning, why his money was in contention.
Do you want to go back on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we on Amy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to talk to Todd about that contingency for regional planning.
Okay.
Because I don't know what that means for them, because Todd said he could start that as soon as possible, it's a two-year process.
Todd, so now that we're back on, let me just say, we checked with Joanne, and the bidding process was followed for the DV roof, which was my question.
Okay. Okay, Todd. You sent us a recap for the appropriation resolution.
Yes.
And in there, we're continuing, just to reiterate, continuing the 15 correction officers for a year. And then we put 50,000 in contingency for the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Vicky?
Yeah, I talked to Todd Pete's Navco the other morning, and he said, because he asked, he said, did I get the money? And I said, well, I think so, I said, it's in contingency, and he said, what does that mean? And I said, well, it means that when you start building a plan, that there's money there. And he said, well, I can start as soon as possible, so can we give him, he said it's over a two-year process, so would we give him 25 this year?
Well, that's the stuff that needs worked out of, are you going to split, are you going to give it all upfront?
Do it in phases.
Because the other question, I guess, I thought it was going to affect the price, they were reviewing how many hours we were going to get a year. So for example, in 2021, if we had more hours, wouldn't that have reduced the cost as well? Because they'll be using our hours as well. So I thought there were some answers there, but if you want to give them 50,000, 25,000, whatever you want, we can do that.
Well, we could ask Todd as far as if he wants to, because we probably need a guideline for it, to do it in phases, and pay as we go. Because we tabled that discussion until next year. And if, even if we put it in there, I don't know if it'll go into effect next year or 2021, as far as making our investment more equitable, as far as the TA hours.
Well, I think he needs to start that plan in 2020, I really do.
Oh yeah, I'm not debating that, but I think he should go ahead, because it was down to 56, and then they, they reduced it down to 50. And like I, I had a conversation with Todd yesterday, I know Jogga County paid 98,000 just to update their existing plan. So. So is this something that you wanted to talk about there being a contingency for?
Well, he didn't understand what that meant, and I told him there was money put aside, it wasn't going to be put in his budget right away. And he said, well, I can start the plan right away.
Gotcha.
So he said, well, it's over a two-year period, so I thought maybe put 25,000 in, and then kind of see where it goes.
You know what, I'll call Todd, and I'll ask him if he could, because I really would like to have a timeline for like the different phases. Because we have to be involved in it as well, to see, and then see how we can do the money, if the money's there.
So is there something we have to do on a contingency basis here today, Todd, or is it just going back?
No, no, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, I usually send letters out.
Right.
As soon as you guys approve things, telling people how much they have, and for example, in contingency, I wouldn't say that it's theirs for sure. I would only tell them, you know, like their dues are set aside for them. If you were sure that you wanted to give them 25, I could include that in the letter, but there's nothing wrong with you telling them in January, if it.
Yeah.
Whenever it's the same.
Okay. I'll follow up with them on that.
It says here, additional funds for county administrator, we had not.
I didn't get an answer last week, and I don't put it in unless I'm told to, so it's not in there right now.
Okay. I think that's appropriate, and, you know, down the road, that hopefully can change, but we're, we're not there yet.
Yeah, there's probably a lot more discussion, just our expectations and stuff too. But it's definitely something we should consider for next year. Additional position for the sheriff, we already went over that. So I think that was it, other than discussed earlier, the maintenance worker for the correction center.
Right, there's, you can give the money to the sheriff, we talked about that last week, my.
That should be a contingency, definitely, shouldn't it?
Well, historically, what will happen then, and you certainly have cuts possibly coming the end of twenty twenty, those type of positions are the first things to get cut. And so if you actually want to ensure a maintenance worker is there for several years to come, I would recommend a different way, other than just putting it all in his budget. And one of the ways we talked about is having him hire the staff, but build the work back to Joanne's budget. That way.
On your maintenance?
The, the money is controlled as a separate line item, in other words, it wouldn't save him anything to cut that position. That's one way, however, he, he needs to agree to that process, right now maintenance is your job under Joanne, and so.
I think she's wanting to get rid of that.
Well, she does, the question's whether the sheriff wants to take it, and that's what's.
Well, they brought it up.
The maintenance of the building is your, well, they mentioned that they want one, I don't know that they.
Oh, that they want to pay that way, I got you.
And that they wanted to be in charge of, you know, telling the person what to do and blah, blah, blah. So I, I think there's some conversation with the sheriff there, but if it goes through Joanne's budget, that's an easy enough change to make.
Okay.
Yeah, so we don't have to make a decision today.
Right, not this year, yeah, we can do that once we're settled next year.
Okay, and then Todd, I ask you to see what the poll is.
Yeah, right now, the C P I is sitting at two point three.
Two point three.
When I look down here.
Okay. Okay. So you want to start moving these?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Should we start?
Yeah, you can start with that, and then the add-on.
I will second, roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Is it moving?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to transfer from fund zero zero one, general fund, to fund fourteen eighty B A W A.
I will second, roll calling. Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the signing of an agreed entry in an appropriation action filed by the village of Pyron for a point seven one seven eight acre portion of land.
I will abstain.
I will second, roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Breena?
Abstain.
I'll make a motion approving the execution of temporary easement upon a point oh two three acre of land to the city of Streetsboro for the purpose of allowing necessary grading work for a road improvement project.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Breena? Yes.
Vicki? Yes.
I'll move to approve the signing of the donation letter submitted on behalf of the city of Streetsboro for a transportation improvement project and approving the execution of a quick clean deed regarding the transfer of point oh five two acres of land to the city of Streetsboro for a public purpose of a road improvement.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
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 I will make a motion to transfer from fund zero zero two, general fund, to fund one three one oh, M H R B.
I will.
That should be zero zero one.
I wonder, I was like, wait.
No, no, I'm sorry, that should be zero zero two, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the M H R B.
Okay. All right, I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
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 I will make a motion to pass the general fund fiscal year twenty twenty annual appropriation measure.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Breena? Yes.
Vicki? Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass the non-general funds fiscal year twenty twenty annual appropriation measure.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Breena? Yes.
Yes.
And then. I'll make a motion to pass the journal entry in accordance with Ohio revised code, section three twenty-one dot two six one, the board of commissioners acknowledged receipt of the D TAC report expended through December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, as presented by the Porch County Treasurer.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Breena? Yes.
Yes.
And I will make a motion to pass the journal entry, the board of commissioners authorized electronic submission of the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services Quarterly SubGrant Report for the third quarter for domestic balance intervention project, grant number twenty eighteen dash W F dash V A two dash eight two two two, for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, as presented by Donnie Buchanan, Family and Community Services.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
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 And then I'll make a motion to pass the journal entry. December nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Which one is it?
The overall.
Oh, the overall, okay. I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Breena? Yes.
Yes.
And with that, I will make a.
Did you get the transfer to seven zero zero two?
That was in the.
All those were in the.
Yeah, that's in the.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Good. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Yes.
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 And tomorrow, we're meeting at nine?
Okay.
Time for lunch, thanks to you, Vicki, I'm starving.
You're welcome. Merry Christmas.